Our regular Borough Council meeting, October twelfth, two thousand twenty-three. We will begin first with a moment of silence. I had originally planned to recognize breast cancer awareness month. Having had several close friends and family who who struggled with that and fought it and won. But there's been a lot of violence in the world. I don't know if everybody's been checking out the news lately. So so my thoughts have been on that, not just in Israel and Gaza Strip. Of course, the ongoing conflict in Ukraine and genocides happening throughout throughout the world. So tonight we're going to be voting on our strategic plan. And I'll get to that in a bit, potentially voting on our strategic plan, I should say. But in in thinking about what's been going on in in our world. I think about how we have these conflicts where we we fight over scraps of land and resources. But in reality, when you when you look across the major religions and philosophies throughout time. There's a lot of similarities. So I'm going to read five quotes. Some of you may pick up which is which, but I'm not going to label them. The first one is, in every in everything, do to others as you would have them do to you. Next, this is the sum of duty. Do not do to others what would cause pain if done to you. Treat not others in ways that you yourself would find hurtful. What is hateful to you, do not do to your neighbor. Not one of you truly believes until you wish for others what you wish for yourself. That comes from Christianity, Hinduism, Buddhism, Judaism, and Islam. So we fight, we kill. But there's I I'm a firm believer in hope. And Chinese philosopher said, to put the world in order, we must first put the nation in order. To put the nation in order, we must put the family in order. To put the family in order, we must cultivate our personal life and to cultivate our personal life, must first set our hearts right. And I think our strategic plan tonight is in line with those those philosophies. Where we say, in Carlisle, our history inspires innovative ideas that create a safe, inclusive, and welcoming community. Where every individual can thrive and make a difference. That's looking out for your neighbor. As we try to do each each night here, we have a meeting and hopefully throughout our daily lives. So for a moment of silence, take a moment to set our hearts right. Please join me. Please rise with me for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to their public, for which it stands. One nation, under God, indivisible, liberty, and justice for all.
Mr. Secretary of the role, please.
Mr. Ramsey. Mr. Hicks.
President.
Deputy Mayor Landis.
Here.
Ms. Mellon.
Here.
Ms. Perry. Mr. Stube.
Here.
Mayor Schultz.
Here. First order of business is we have we have Mr. Ramsey by by Zoom. Sean, you're you're with us, right?
Yep, I'm here.
Okay. May I have a a motion to approve Mr. Ramsey attending by video conference? So moved. A motion by Counsel Stube. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Counsel Mellon. Any discussion? I'll call the question. He is a Braves fan. I'll note that. I'm wearing a Phillies tie, Sean. I'll call the question. All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say nay. Motion passes. Welcome, Sean.
Thanks. Go Braves.
Next is an opportunity for citizens, visitors to be heard. We don't have anybody. We do have a we'll have Richard with a presentation. But is there anybody here in Borough Hall who wishes to be heard on any issue Borough Government? See no one here. Do we have anybody by Zoom? Okay, we'll move on. Richard, the floor is yours for third quarter financial snapshot. You can pick us up from my gloom and doom with with numbers, Richard.
Yeah. October is a scary month for not only Halloween, but the fact that I have to do some public speaking. So we'll get started here with the third quarter. A lot of this is going to seem like a rerun of your favorite show, maybe a little bit less exciting, but. We'll start with this familiar slide, which is the current state of our utility accounts in the past due balances. Showing where we are in the third quarter of every year. We had seen an increase due to COVID and the the decision to delay terminations and late fees. To benefit our customers. Through two thousand twenty-three, we're seeing a sharp decline in that in our aged accounts, which we're happy to see. Moving on to the water fund. So our enterprise funds are our water, sewer, stormwater, solid waste and parking. Water, sewer, and stormwater are going to be relatively the same. So I'll talk a little bit more on the water and we'll kind of breeze through the other two. Because they all deal with the utilities that we provide to our customers. So through today, through the third quarter, our expenses are in line with previous years. Our department budgets are relatively in line. They're about seventy-eight percent of budget. A little bit over due to higher chemical costs than anticipated. But we'll continue monitoring that through year end. Revenues are in line. We're at seventy-seven percent of budget. One of the benefits that we're seeing right now is higher interest rates than in previous years. We're receiving about two percent interest in our bank. And last year, we were receiving about point seven. So a good increase theirs is benefiting us. Stormwater fund, again, we're meeting expectations with our expenses and revenues. Nothing super exciting to point out here, so we'll just keep moving along there. Our sewer fund, again, we're in line. One of the things that I did want to point out in our in my last presentation is we were seeing slightly lower. Other revenues, which was due to delays in billing some of our municipal partners that has since been resolved. And we're getting that money back as expected. Our solid waste fund, this is our trash fund. The way it was established in two thousand twenty-three is that it's basically an in and out account. We collect money on behalf of our trash hauler and we then turn that money over to them. What something I did want to point out is at the end of the third quarter in comparison to two thousand twenty-two, we're a little bit in the positive, which is a good thing. Benefiting a little bit from that interest and other revenues. Whereas last year we were operating in a deficit, so it's good to see that change. In the bottom right, I do have a couple of statistics about the number of dwelling units that we serve, which has been relatively consistent for the these three quarters. And then tag sales, you're seeing a steady decline in the number of extra tags people are buying to put out in trash. Our parking fund, right now we're meeting expectations. The total expenses are low and they typically are low at this point in the year. One of our larger expenses in this fund is debt service. And that typically occurs in October. So I did include that there, just so we know that typically we'll see higher expenses in that fourth quarter of the year. We're also seeing some savings from budget due to open positions that we had intended to have filled during the year. From a revenue perspective, one thing I wanted to point out is we had installed our EV chargers. There's a couple of statistics just from September eighteenth through the eleventh, showing that we had about eighteen users. Forty-four charging sessions with an average charge time of two and a half hours. Our general fund, which is primarily funded through taxes, is meeting expectations. Right now we're at about seventy percent of our budget expenses. In terms of revenues, we're at eighty-three percent of budget. So we typically collect our property taxes early in the year, so we get the majority of our revenues early. And then we spend that down through the remainder of the year. A couple of things I wanted to point out is our revenue sources for this fund. So the the two real estate taxes are our general purpose tax and our fire service tax. Our general purpose tax typically funds about twenty-seven percent of our expenses. Overall for the general fund and then our fire service tax, which is strictly for fire-related costs. Funds about fifty percent of those specific costs. So while we do charge a specific fire tax, we have to fund that particular service, either through general purpose real estate taxes. Or, as you see in that third bullet, non-real estate tax revenues, which fund nearly sixty-nine percent of yearly expenses. And that's primarily made up of the earned income tax, local grants that we get or any any grant that we get. And then local services tax are our primary drivers there. And this slide is just a recap. We're showing all the funds together. Again, we're looking positive through the third quarter, so not too much to be concerned about at this point. That's it.
Any any questions?
Okay.
That's it. Thank you. Thanks, Richard. Thanks once again. Next is the consent agenda. So this is a list of routine items which do not appear to be controversial in nature and which probably do not require additional discussion. It can be acted on by one motion in their current form. If discussion is desired on any particular item, any member of council or the public may request the item be removed from the consent agenda and that item will be considered separately. Is there anybody requesting such removal from the consent agenda? Okay, I see none. Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda?
So moved.
Motion by the deputy mayor. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Counsel Mellon. Any discussion? I'll call the question. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say nay. The motion passes. Under the regular agenda, there are no tabled, continued, or recurring items. Move on to to my report. And I'll just to load it up for discussion. And thus, before I do that, are there any members of council who would like to have a little bit more time with the strategic plan, would like like a table? Is everybody ready to move forward with it? Ready to go? Okay. Then I I move the council approve the strategic plan. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by the deputy mayor. We've we've probably discussed this at ad nauseam at this at this point over a number of of public meetings. I already read the vision statement tonight during during my comments. I I think, is it is the Stephanie, is the plan yet up on the website? I didn't, not yet, not. You're waiting till we approve. Okay, good enough. So really, I just want to thank all of council for participating very thoughtfully through that process. But not only council and and staff, but also the 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 public. And I noted that in in my my letter that's part of the strategic plan. Because I think that that moment, in particular that last meeting we had, was was, I thought, pretty special, where we sat down side by side with residents and worked through some of the finer details of the strategic plan. Is there anybody else who would make like to make any additional comment on this item? Okay, then I'll call the question. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say nay. The motion passes and we have our first ever strategic plan. Thank you, everybody. Next, just a note that at unfortunately Counsel Perry couldn't be here tonight, but she had requested a proclamation on health equity. And I'll just read the the first paragraph of that that I've that I've already signed tonight. Health equity exists when all people of diverse backgrounds have fair and just access, opportunity, and resources to achieve their highest potential for health. Achieving health equity involves addressing health disparities. And so to to recognize the need for greater health equity. I'm proclaiming October twenty-fourth, two thousand twenty-three as Health Equity Day in Carlisle. To raise awareness of health inequities and to call all of us to join in the work of making health equity realized throughout all sectors and communities in the Commonwealth. With appropriate activities and and programs and and if Counsel Perry were here, she'd be able to speak more on it. And I'm sure she'll she'll have an opportunity to to make further public announcements on that. Next, we have reports from committees, budget and finance.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I have one item this evening. I move that Borough Council authorize a partial reimbursement in the amount of one thousand nine hundred sixty-six dollars for building permit fees associated with the New Cumberland County Public Safety Radio Tower at sixteen hundred and one Rittner Highway.
Counsel Stube makes a motion to authorize partial reimbursement associated with the New Cumberland County Public Safety Radio Tower. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Counsel Ramsey. Any discussion? I'll call the question. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 Those opposed, say nay. The motion passes. Thank you, Mr. Stube. Sustainability and Community Planner.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Four items for us to consider tonight. First, I move the council approve the Community Development Block Grant. Citizen Participation Plan is proposed by the Borough's Ground Administrator, which is the redevelopment authority of Cumberland County.
Counsel Hicks makes a motion to approve the Community Development Block Grant Citizen Participation Plan. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by the deputy mayor. Any discussion?
I do want to maybe suggest we we have, I guess it has to be done every eight years or so. And thank you for indulging my question. I I would love at some point to to get a a better sense of of the intent of this, to reach certain communities. And if it's provided, I apologize, I've missed it, but it is something I'd really be interested in.
No, absolutely. So when I joined the redevelopment authority last year around this time. I one of the first things I wanted to do was clean up the policies. This policy has not actually been updated since two thousand fourteen. So one of the first things we wanted to do was make it a plan to be able to be accessible for all. So public meetings on actual any agenda items, the action plan, the CAPR, and all of the above. Have a Zoom meeting on a separate date that goes out in the announcement in a paper of general circulation, the Sentinel. And it goes for thirty days before it actually comes in front of the borough. We are also changing the actual leading up to accepting proposed activities. So right now, the plan actually is that application season starts November one, within doing back on March one. Leading up to that, we have five open house events throughout the county and one here in Carlisle coming up on October twenty-fifth. At different times of the day, as well as one the day of applications open to allow our other boroughs, as well as nonprofit entities to learn more about the grant process, the reimbursement process, and feel more comfortable with the staff at the redevelopment authority that is executing those agreements for them. Ask any general questions about eligibility, fundability, and anything like that. So we move to update it to allow the accessibility to get out and get a feel for what our people need more and how they would like these grant funds to be used in an effective manner.
Thank you very much. And yeah, it sounded like it was due, I think, in two thousand fourteen, if you asked me what Zoom was, I would have, I have no idea. So yeah, keeping up with technology, applaud all that. And everything you mentioned makes perfect sense. And I I would assume that will improve the our outreach to the intended audience. If if you can share.
Sure.
What we're learning.
Sure. So so I did these outreach events last year. We did four of them and we met ten new people who were interested in involving in the grants. So far, we have had two so far, one in Mechanicsburg, and I had one yesterday in New Cumberland. We had over thirty-five people show up. And these are new nonprofit entities that are interested in youth programming and interested in affordable housing, especially being able to buy blighted property, acquire them, and be able to put them on the voucher list. As everybody knows, the voucher list right now in our county is two and a half years long waiting. So being able to allow the people to create generational wealth by inheriting these duplexes and things like that that need a little bit of tender loving care is all what we're here for. So we're getting out there and reaching the people who unfortunately were a little bit more intimidated because they see federal and grant and are worried about the stipulations. We try to come over that barrier with them.
Fantastic. I I'm particularly sensitive to energy burdens in in view of. Counsel Perry's proclamation, she put forward, you know, low-income renters, seven percent of their income is energy. Compared to an average high income of two percent. And so in the CDBG, as you know, we have energy efficiency.
Yes.
Blockouts and and I want to make sure that that we can understand what the barriers are and and.
Absolutely.
Maybe potentially be able to plus that up a bit. But I I think that's an area I intend to focus on.
Yes.
In the Climate Action Commission, but it's going to be incumbent that we be able to reach out to those people.
Exactly. And it's not just housing. It's our nonprofits, our it's our entities that are really on on boots on the grounds doing these work. They have to pay so much money to be able to keep their business running, electric, things like that. And they're not energy efficient either. So we're able to give them a facilities grant to improve that, update the HVAC and things like that. I actually just did one for a youth center and they were able to lower their bill monthly by three hundred and fifty dollars. That's three hundred and fifty dollars that is able to go to homeless youth and get them off the streets faster. So while we are just looking at one, we're looking at everything.
I love what I I'm hearing. We're doing a lot. I I hope to be able to do more and and we're partnering with you to to reach out and use these funds the best we can. Thank thanks for that information.
Sure.
That's all I have. Thanks.
Okay. Any further discussion?
I'll just say that I've actually seen your events posted publicly more this year than I ever have before. So it's working. I saw them too, so that that's why there's maybe thirty-five people, but good job. I it's it's apparent.
I'm a very sociable person, so people like to come see me.
Thank you. Anything further? I'll call the question. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say nay. The motion passes.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Next item, I move the council direct the Borough Solicitor to draft and advertise an amendment to the Comp Plan and amendments to the Carlisle zoning ordinance and zoning map in accordance with the Pennsylvania Municipalities Planning Code. Approved that would facilitate holding a public hearing on December fourteenth, two thousand twenty-three. I don't know if Jared, you have anything you want to add? I think you did an outstanding job as well in laying out the issues last week, but if you have anything to add.
Not really.
Okay.
Counsel Hicks makes a motion to draft and advertise amendment to the Comp Plan and amendments to the zoning ordinance and zoning map. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by the deputy mayor. Any any discussion? Hearing none, I'll call the question. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 Those opposed, say nay. The motion passes.
The next item is I move the council approve the request by Community Cares to waive preliminary plan review per section two-two-six dash nineteen and approve the final plans to develop homeless shelter at two-thirties South Spring Garden Street, subject to conditions imposed by staff.
Counsel Hicks makes a motion to approve the request by Community Cares to waive preliminary plan review and approve the final plans for a homeless shelter on South Spring Garden. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by the deputy mayor. Is there any discussion? Oh, go ahead. Come on up.
Good evening, everybody. Justin Doty, Frederick Cyberd Associates. I'm the engineer for the project and I'm happy to work with Community Cares. You're very familiar with the program. And I have with me Brad Griffey, who is the president of their board, as well as the the attorney helping us with this project. So Brad had a a couple of things to discuss and one request to make of council as part of this motion.
The the first thing, we would ask the council consider waiving the rec fee for this project. Obviously, we are a nonprofit and we're trying to keep under our budget as much as we can. Recognize purposes for the rec fee, obviously. But we we're asking consideration that it be waived. And I may as well ask this. The second thing is. We've reviewed and I've reviewed with Justin requirements for the bond. I am not a hundred percent sure, and I I really am a layperson when we're talking about the engineering. But I'm not a hundred percent sure that there's. Part of our project or any extensive part of our project for which a bond should be required. So those are the two main issues that we wanted to raise and ask council to consider before, hopefully, giving approval to the project.
Do I'm trying to recall from the the briefing that we have, do we have this as part of the request before us this evening? Jared, is that all in front of us?
Those two additional waivers were were not included, but the rec impact fee was discussed. And there's some language in the newest memo that advises council and the applicant to consider a pedestrian easement in lieu of a recreation impact fee. To the bond, we didn't address that and I don't think we've had any discussion about it, but certainly could leave the door open.
Okay, and since those weren't before us, I'm going to, you know, I'm not going to step on the solicitor's toes. So they're they're they weren't before us this evening. That's not something we can consider this evening because the amendment is sunshine. Not to put words in your mouth. Okay, all right. So Brad, do you want us to table this or do you want us to go forward and then we could always come back and consider future waivers?
No, based on what was was just said. I'll I'm I'm going to leave it up to our engineer and discussion, ongoing discussions relative to what bond we may need to supply. And we are aware of, and and in fact, we'll be looking into the the ability that we may or may not have to provide some sort of easement for pedestrian traffic through our our essentially our driveway. So we we we're aware of that, so I'm I'm satisfied that we can deal with that, so.
Okay, we're we're all, I think, very keenly aware of the the need for this shelter, so.
Thank you.
So we we'd like to see it moving forward.
Mr. Mayor, if you don't mind, I I would like to highlight one item and and I'm glad you are here is. I sort of took a gulp at seeing that there was impervious coverage limit of eighty percent was exceeded. So and I know. There there's language here that applicants should consider reducing the pavement area. Just from my mouth to yours, anything you can do that doesn't limit the usability of that space that can reduce the amount of impervious surface, including calling me up with an act picks, I will come over and dig things. To the extent it serves your purpose, I would love to see that number reduced to something much smaller than eighty percent.
Well, thank you, councilman. That's an interesting point. The the eighty percent is exceeded in the pre-development condition, so we're not making that any worse. We we have discussed with staff the possibility of reducing some of the impervious and some of our dead space, if you will, in the parking lot. The reason we kept it in was for maximum vehicular circulation around the building. It's pretty tight. But we'll certainly work with Jared and and work on some creative ideas to maximize vegetation in the in the front of the building and as well as around the parking lot.
Thank you.
Sure.
I imagine there are some tight margins in the shelter business, huh, Beth? All right. Any any further discussion? I'll call the question. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say nay. The motion passes.
Last item this evening, Mr. Mayor, is I move the council waive the submission of a formal subdivision plan from section two-two-six dash fourteen, two-two-six dash seventeen, two-two-six dash twenty-one of the Sado by Carlisle United Methodist Church in Keith and Beverly Moose for the proposed modification of a parcel within Carlisle Barrel and South Middleton Township on South Spring Garden Street.
Motion by Counsel X for the waiver of submission of formal subdivision plan for a modification of parcel within Carlisle Barrel on South Middleton Township on South Spring Garden Street. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by the deputy mayor. Any discussion? Hearing none, I'll call the question. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say nay. The motion passes.
And that concludes my report. Thank you.
Okay, employee relations.
Great, thank you. I have one item tonight. I make the motion that Borough Council appoint. Great, thank you. I have one item tonight. Um, I make the motion that Borough Council, uh, appoint Ethan Barnes to the Civil Service Commission effective immediately and expiring in July thirty-first, twenty twenty-six.
Motion by deputy mayor to appoint Mr. Barnes to Civil Service Commission. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by council Melon. Any discussion?
Um, I'll just note that, uh, um, Amy in HR and Donna Greenwood from our Civil Service Commission and myself were able to meet with Ethan. Um, he is a young, engaged, uh, Dickinson student, um, and he has, uh, a lot of interesting experience in policy, um, at the poli-, at the legislature level. Um, his father is a police officer in, um, DC. Um, he used to live in Carlisle and has chosen to come back looking to go to law school. Um, so I think, uh, that he has a, a wealth of, um, it, of interest and experience in his young life and, uh, we're planning some good mentorship to, to bring him on board. So I'm, I'm very excited to have this person, um, be a new member of our commission.
Great to hear. Thank you. Um, hearing no further discussion, I'll call the question. All those in favor please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say nay. The motion passes.
That completes my report.
Okay, Public Works.
I'll, uh, take this one as well this evening. Um, there's one item on the Public Works Committee agenda this evening. I move that Borough Council approve the September sixth, two thousand twenty-three proposal from Gannett Fleming Incorporated to provide engineering design and permitting services for the replacement of the existing Ridge Street Water Storage Tank for a not to exceed amount of one hundred sixty-nine thousand dollars. Subject to the borough solicitors, satisfy to review and approval of the agreement amendment.
Council Stevie makes a motion to approve the proposal from Gannett Fleming to provide engineering design permitting services for the replacement of Ridge Street Water Storage Tank. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Council Hicks. Uh, is there any discussion? Hearing not on call the question. All those in favor please indicate by saying aye.
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 Those opposed say nay. The motion passes.
And that concludes the Public Works Committee, uh, report this evening.
Thank you, Mr. Stevie. Uh, next is, uh, under, under new business, another opportunity for, uh, citizens to come forward to be, to be heard on any issue of our government. Is there anybody here who wishes to be heard? Mr. Evans, come on up. You know the drill, name and address.
You guys like, uh, he's here again. James Evans, one five seven B Street, here obviously in the borough. Um, just listening in tonight, I will say that, uh, for the Community Cares, I would implore the council, I know you guys are working with them, but for future projects, it helps the homeless and try to ben- benefit people to get on their feet. Some of the things I know that are a priority is to maybe look that you can fast track things because I'm not sure what the timeframe is to get the shelter, but we've got the cold weather coming. We already got cold weather here. Things that benefit people to get back on their feet and try to get back into the community and get help. If there's a way maybe in the future to write something that we can fast track projects like that while still holding people within the right and left limits. I would just say, you know, from my perspective of seeing that. Um, the second piece that I'm just, uh, uh, raising, I've already emailed you guys. I think you have the pictures, but it's the, uh, part of the, the whole connectivity project, but the, um, cause I don't want to see the borough get sued or anything like that, but the, the light problems, there's a lot of micro cracks in these, uh, lights that were part of B Street Connectivity Project and down to the, the other fields. Um, I think I reported there was a light that fell down on Fairground Avenue. Um, I'm not sure if it was pushed over or whatever, but it looked like there was something, a weak point where it's bolted to the ground and it fell over. There is one light between, and I've already reported it. I know, I guess it's got pushed up the P P and L. But there is a light that's bubbling at the bottom, so I don't know if there's an electrical heat issue. Um, I have pictures. I think I sent some, but it's getting worse and it's going up the pole. Um, the pole has a lean back towards a house. The last thing you want is that pole to fall into house and then you got a fire, um, that's, that spreads. So I'm just trying to raise that because I don't want to see somebody lose a property. I don't want to see, um, you know, somebody coming down here to the borough to say from a liability aspect. I'm not sure who is liable if it's P P and L, but it's a safety issue. And like I said, at least on B Street down to, uh, the Fairground Avenue, I've walked and looked at the poles and a lot of them got, uh, a lot of micro cracks in them um, and weak points. And I'm not sure how they were purchased, but if, is, if there's a warranty from the company that produced those, I would go back and hold them accountable for that. Um, because the last thing we're going to have is high winds or kids or somebody running into them and you're going to have all these lights fall over and then it defeats the purpose of what they were installed for. So I just wanted to highlight it again and more so, I try to spread it out in the community, but this is the thing, not to say that you guys aren't looking at it, but, um, just so people are aware and are looking at lights around their neighborhood. So the next thing, they don't have something falling into their house in the middle of the night or during the day. But I just wanted to raise that to you guys. And I got pictures or if you guys have any questions on anything that I looked at, let me know. Um, cause I tend to walk the neighborhood pretty regularly.
Yeah, I just to let everyone know, the, uh, the, uh, street lights are owned by PPL, uh, they're wearing the situation. And, uh, it's my understanding that, um, a lot of the, uh, replacement items are backordered. Uh, we met, uh, with PPL earlier this week about another project and, and, and this item came up, reminding them of their, uh, of the, the problems out there.
Okay, great. So we've put the, the response with heart on, on notice, but thank you, Mr. Evans for bringing that.
The last thing I will say is though, I know it's P P and L, but I would work with them to take this one particular light out and I can show you, I have more pictures. That light keeps leaning and the poles, it's going to become a weak point because it's bubbling up the pole from a heat issue. So if that snaps, it's leaning back towards a house and I know it's in P P and L's port, but last thing you want, I knocked on the door and told the guy, he's aware of it, but the last thing you want that to do is fall and spark a fire. Uh, because it's not going to fall on the ground like on Fairground, it's going to fall into the house. So I just want to raise that issue. Uh, I don't know if you can work in the borough, can at least lay it there and P P and L can do it or however, you know, what agreements you guys have, but that's, I'm more, I'm concerned about safety. Let's put it that way.
Sure. Yeah, absolutely.
Thank you, and I, I appreciate.
Marks, they're writing, writing things down.
I appreciate you, you being observant. I'm observant too, and I walk around too and I notice things. So I appreciate people that notice things and let us know. So, so, and for the safety and good of the community. So thank you for noticing.
All right. Thank you guys for your time.
Thanks, Jim. Um, anybody else? Anybody by zoom? Nope. Okay. Then we'll go, uh, reports from, from, uh, staff and ambassador and go ahead, Brad.
Uh, no new reports today. Thank you.
Okay. Council Mel?
Uh, I just want to say, um, you know, if you say you believe in hope, Mr. Mayor, um, tomorrow, the United Way is holding its annual day of caring, which is, um, when volunteers come through, from throughout the community and, and work on projects to help nonprofits like Community Cares and others. And we have a record number of volunteers this year. Um, three hundred and ninety, I think, will be, um, deployed tomorrow morning from, uh, the Dickinson College campus. So you'll see them all around town tomorrow in their red t-shirts.
Mr. Stevie? I have nothing for this. Council Cramps, you have nothing about your baseball team?
No, nothing tonight. Thanks.
Okay. Um, I, I will, I have a number of meetings tomorrow, but one of them is to, uh, sit on a panel at the law school. Um, the, the Anti-Racism Development Institute has a, has its convenient, convening that started today, I believe. Um, so I have the opportunity of partake, taking that and I'll look forward to that. Deputy Mayor, line this.
I just have a couple of quick things. Uh, one, um, on a, uh, I, I was un- unhappy to see the weather this weekend for again, another DCA event, the Molly Pitcher vanish, but, um, uh, I actually was in, uh, chat with Phil from the DCA and I was like, you know, that new skate, uh, shop has a giant back, uh, back room, like warehouse. And he had already talked to them. And so like, I love having new businesses work with old businesses to make things happen. And so you can be sheltered and go to the block party, which is not so much on the block, but maybe in the block, um, in the, in the buildings. So, uh, that is still going on and I'm very excited to see that happen and, um, and also to see a skate shop in Carlisle for many reasons. Um, the other thing is, uh, my favorite Carlisle event is coming, um, this month, which is the Halloween parade. And yes, I've already signed up my, my spot. You, I think you still have some time to be, to sign up, right? Okay. So maybe till the twentieth, you can still sign up to be in the parade, which it is an exceptional time. It is so much fun. But if not, I will see you there because you will come to the parade and just enjoy it for what it is, of course. Um, and then the last thing is I just want to give, uh, the cheers, all the cheers, the shout out, the exceptional glory and goodness of Koanis of doing the wonderful work of, of putting years and time and love and commitment into rebuilding, um, Fort Lutort. And, uh, I saw that Stephanie was out and got to see lots of kids already enjoying it and, um, the children of today and our future will all continue to enjoy this lovely spot. Um, so, uh, we need to thank the people that quietly do work and, um, you may not know their names or what, whatever, but sometimes we just need to say thank you publicly, even if you don't know who they are, like, there are lots and lots and lots of people who do work not just to build a park, to take care of folks in, in need, in quiet need, in many different ways. And so tonight, I'm just shouting out to Koanis because they finally achieved their, their project. Um, and I just want to make sure that we continue saying thank you to all the people that make this community as wonderful as it is.
Speaking of love thy neighbor. Council Hicks.
I think we have the same vibe, uh, cause I, I'm going to actually call people by name. Um, I, I want to recognize two people here tonight. First, Andrea. Uh, I have the privilege of walking my dogs by the skate park pretty much every day and that is a home run project. Uh, it, it fills my heart because it's almost always packed and, um, it's just a brilliant thing to have in, uh, starting that whole project, uh, the linear part, but it's, it's been a tremendous success and, and good. I know that was a ton of work. Again, thank you. And I want to recognize, uh, Beth Kemp here from Cares. Um, thank you. Uh, we, we, um, are indebted to the work you do here. Uh, we don't say it enough and, um, we're, I'm thrilled that we're going to be able to have a little bit more capability for you to do your, do your work. But, um, it's great to see you and, and thank you for everything you do in our community.
For our manager Armstrong, anything?
Nothing to say. Thank you.
Mr. Solicitor.
I promised the borough secretary that I wouldn't speak tonight so he could get home and watch Philadelphia.
Okay. Um, there's nothing further. This meeting is adjourned. Thank you all.